Alright, so it's two o'clock.
Yeah, I'm ready.
Ready? Okay, so it's two o'clock, we'll go ahead and call this workshop to order, and let's go ahead and stand up for the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Notice of this workshop was published in the Fort Myers News Press on June 5th, 2023.
Do we need a motion to allow the participants here remote?
Yes.
Okay.
So move, second.
So we have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Alright.
Thank you.
Let's go ahead and start with the items for discussion on the fiscal year 2024 budget. So Laura, you want to present it, and then we'll go by?
The version we're going to be discussing says version one, July 9th, 2023, is that correct?
No.
June 9th.
Stephen Blum is also online, he's the man behind the document, so he will be able to answer your question, between him and I will get your... There's a brief presentation PowerPoint that he put together that I'd like to show you first before we start.
We got a printed copy of this coming, or is this... This looks different than anything I've got, okay.
Do you want?
You want to just go through the, we'll go through the overview, the review here quick first, and then we'll get into the details of where all this stuff came from.
Can we ask a basic question first? Steve, this Ed.
Hey, how you doing?
Are fine, fine, are all of the numbers in this report up to date on both the 001, 002 accounts relative to the current number of customers or ERUs in the entire community, including the new developments, both in Gateway and Pelican Preserve?
So there, I did not make any of those changes, I did a complete review, actually I finished it half an hour ago of going through the total role that we were provided, and there are some adjustments that have to be made, nothing significant in terms of adding major developments, and I say what I'm talking about is kind of some parcels being split out into others, I found some new right away parcels, so some of these minor things that we kind of do every year with Russ, but nothing that, I think what you're talking about in terms of adding any new major developments or adding new parcels, in total, the difference between last year's role and the new role is 12 parcels, of which most of those are right away and other different things that would not affect that overall number that Ed, that I think you're kind of...
Are you talking about 001?
I'm talking both, the entire role, everything.
I got thirty, Steve, I got thirty-six in my own Gateway, thirty-eight in my own Gateway Greens that were here last year.
Well, again, all I did from looking at this is take the role that was provided from the county and line it up with our current role, so I'd have to see what each one of those parcels and see if it was on the the current one, meaning that...
We're gonna have to look at that because those numbers, I can guarantee you definitively they are wrong.
So...
I'm watching the buildings being built, and they will be in 2024, but the only good news is, is that the, anything that's come in the way of an ad will only go to reduce the budget later as opposed to adding it, in other words, we'll buy more units to divide to make the number lower, but it definitely needs to be checked.
Well, no, and that's, I think that's the point, a couple of things here is, one is, we get the file from the county with the parcels on it, so we have, we're lining that up parcel for parcel, so if, so the ones that you're mentioning, they could either have not, not have been changed yet, or I mean, it's worth going through, you know, we do this, you know, every year at this time, we kind of go parcel by parcel, but like I said, the only ones I've found were 12, I'm, we'll go through any ones that you're talking about and look them up and see what the timing is, but that's how that exercise works, and then obviously, as you know, Ed, you know, when it comes time to everything gets adopted, we send in these numbers again based on that role for those, you know...
Steve, C4 falls in the same category of what Ed is talking about.
C5.
C5.
Plated last year though, so that was...
The whole thing?
Yes.
Yeah, but it was plated, but it's people now.
The adjustments last year for the fiscal '23 budget for C5.
That's what I want to make sure it was.
Divided out and...
Yeah, but there's people in there now.
I understand that, but I, my...
Doesn't it go by occupancy?
Yeah, it's, that's, that's not correct, when it's pre-development, it's under a different percentage deal, when it goes developed, it's by house count.
Whether or not it's occupied.
Whether or not it's occupied.
Whether or not it's occupied.
Once it's plated or a condominium plat, or, you know...
That's why they changed so much last year for Pelican when C5 got plated, there's changed significantly.
Because I, I know Santa Luz has got thirty-six buildings that are now going to be operational come October 1st.
So I, I looked at that after our conversation this afternoon, and according to the property appraiser, it doesn't have all, I can see where they're in the middle of constructing one of those, three of those, but it did not have those identified as their own parcels, so...
And we're having that, we're having that problem internally at the HOA, because we've got thirteen people living there, and Lee County Property Appraisers shows four.
Typically what will happen with a condominium...
Is it multi-family?
Multi-family.
Okay.
Typically what will happen with condominium, they'll do different phases, they'll record supplements, amendments, the original condominium declaration, as long as the developer's in charge, and then they'll do the survey, that's when it becomes a record, maybe that's when the property appraiser assigns a folio number two, and that's something...
Well, Stephen, what Russ told me this morning is how we have typically done it, is is that Tetra Tech would give Russ any information on any changes and numbers, then Russ would enter them into the Excel workbook or whatever he called it. I just want to make sure that we've done that, and it sounds like we need to check that.
Yeah, no, that's, yeah.
Would you say, Steve?
No, I'll check on that, again, that's the piece that I've, I think that's after we get the parcels that have to be checked, meaning if we get new ones added and we need to go get the numbers, then we probably go back to the engineer for Tetra Tech and say, okay, here's, here's the new parcels, or here's what was divided, then they help us out with that, so I certainly have the, what I'm considering to be the new parcels, that piece I can get with Russ, and then anything else that anyone wants me to check on with Russ, I'm happy to do, if there's a parcel that someone's not sure of the timing, I mean, it's always this timing issue that we we've seen to have in terms of when we expect it to be split out on the roll and ready to go versus sometimes when it actually is.
The only ones to my knowledge could, is Santa Luz, that's currently in construction.
Two other new homes.
Arborwood Phase 3, which we haven't accepted utilities on yet, and then we just approved North Haven, so I highly doubt that that one is on, and then Bob mentioned at the last meeting, there's a Taco Bell going up at, in the commercial area, so I've conveyed those to Stephen, and he'll work through that and reviewing any of those, but we will get more ahead of this in the future, earlier on.
The big thing is, I want to make sure is that that none of these create an expense side cost.
To us.
Because that impacts what we're doing today, if it's just revenue, then it's all positive and all good, but I I'm sure it might have some expense side on the enterprise, but on the other, I don't think so.
I don't, in conversations that we had this morning with Tetra Tech, Arborwood Phase 3 is the only one that we would anticipate anytime soon to accept the utilities, Santa Luz is so far out, and with Arborwood, we're not accepting the roads, we're just accepting the utilities, so from an expense standpoint, and with the developments that we've seen come through, they're very early on in the stages that I don't even see it happening next year, it'd probably be the year after.
Yeah, I don't think Taco Bell's gonna make 24 either.
Oh, well, mine, all of mine will, all my, all my thirty-eight will.
The Santa Luz for sure.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, that's, I just want to make sure that we thought about the expense side, the other side's a positive, but the expense side, we need to be aware of it, and it could impact enterprise.
I do know that, like, on the operating budget, Leslie did take all that into consideration when she planned for supplies and meters and things like that, that we were going to have to put in, so she did a lot for that in her operating budget.
And Arborwood has no roads because they're all HOA master, okay.
Go ahead, go.
Okay, Steve, I've got a question, if you go to page seven of the budget...
Oh, yeah, she's gonna do the slide.
Oh, you want to do the slide?
Yeah, but Ed needed something.
Well, what I was talking about sets the goal for everything we're doing.
Yeah, so Laura was gonna do the presentation.
Actually, Stephen is.
Take it away.
Okay, go ahead, Stephen.
Okay. So if you go to the first slide there, so just to kind of set, set the the stage here, what the slides are supposed to do is just give you the very, very high level overview of the budget, obviously, there's a lot detail that goes into this, and you know, certainly not trying to short circuit that part of it, just want to give you kind of the flavor of where this entire budget is, and then, you know, can kind of go from there, and the first slide up there is your assessment summary for Area 1 and 2, and that kind of shows you the, the impact of the budget for all the funds that would affect the Area 1 and 2. You can see in their general fund column, you got a Stony Brook Town Center, and then the, the one right before the green total is your Lake Bank, your debt service, the Lake Bank Restoration, that's your debt service, and just kind of compare it, I'll just talk about...
Excuse me, am I seeing this, am I seeing what he's talking about?
Yeah, on the screen.
On the screen, well, he calls, it's Stony Brook Inside Gate, he said Town Center.
It's in here, and I don't see anything about the...
Town Lakes, it's Town Lake.
He just mixed two things, that's it, it's Stony Brook Inside Gate and Town Lakes combined, yeah.
Alright, because I saw the lakes, I don't see anything about lake banks.
Yeah, the lake, there it's there.
Now, now, okay.
So, I want, I guess my point is, is that the green column, it would be the total annual assessment amount, so you can see for single family and for multifamily, and then it compares it to what is the current year, the difference, so right now, the way the budget's constructed, very preliminary, you know, kind of top level here, we're talking about, for the single family, about a 13.22% increase, or about 600, I'm sorry, hundred and seven dollars roughly, multifamily about 17% increase roughly, and about a hundred and five dollars. And then you can see commercially, you can see the Stony Brook Inside Gate row there as well, which adds in the Stony Brook piece to it.
So, so if I have a single family home in Stony Brook, I'm gonna pay how much more next year, given the budget that's in front of us right now?
So if you're Stony Brook Inside the Gate, which is that third row, you're gonna pay a hundred... You're gonna pay a hundred and ninety-four dollars rounding that year over year.
So about 200 bucks?
200 bucks.
Property tax bill's gonna go up by 200 bucks because of this.
Because of, because of all, everything that's in your proposed, again, it's your proposed budget, obviously, a lot of changes, a lot of discussions, but that's the start, kind of the starting point, the starting of this discussion here.
And then Stephen, does that include any bonds and everything, all those payments and stuff also? I mean, everything's in here?
Everything's in there for that area, that's correct. Keep, keep in mind, and I have a separate slide for that, your brand new bond that you just closed will not have any new assessments for next year, that was all covered as a part of the opening proceeds, so that would be, you know, moving forward, that'll be something that gets added, but not, not on what you're seeing in front of you.
Okay, I have, I have one comment, and I know Tony has a comment, so Stephen, the 193, it's not taking the reserve study proposal, right?
That's correct.
When you're saying the reserve study proposal...
It's only taking into account the 34,000 that is, that is currently in the budget, if you choose to adjust that, then that number would reflect it.
Yeah, so, so that's what I kind of wanted to tell you.
These numbers are based on where...
These numbers are based on where we landed after the last board meeting, when you had the discussion, which is where Stony Brook had taken some of that funding out for the capital projects, or had requested, I should say, that, that we take, take it out, so there's some funding in there for capital reserves, but not all the funding for the capital reserves, but it does include the landscape and all those additional items that we were talking about, possibly they would take over...
And nothing for the roads.
There's nothing for roads or sidewalks, we took...
That's what I wanted to tell you.
You'll see that detail when we get into the operating part of the budget.
But that is just for her answer, when we say everything is included, it's not.
It's not everything.
Okay, because we haven't determined a reserve fund amount.
If we're gonna follow our procedures as what we're doing for 001, if we're gonna follow 001, it's gonna go high, if we're gonna make it a separate thing, then it may stay in this.
Okay.
Go ahead, Tony.
My only question was, the Lake Bank portion, is that debt service on the SRF loans?
Yes.
Yes.
So I guess the question is, on the net change, from percentage change, from the, it's not included in that number?
Stephen, correct, it is not.
That, the goal of this slide, Tony, which might be a little bit different in what you're thinking maybe for advertising or something later...
You're ahead of me, yes.
All of this slide is to give, for the, with the extent of what's in the operating budget right now and everything, where the increase year over year, if I'm a resident in one of those areas, and I'm trying to bottom line this based on the budget I have in front of me, not anything else added or changed, here's what the total number would be, and here's what it was last year. Certainly, the advertising piece, because I know when we do the advertising, the debt does not get included, and it's operating versus operating, a completely different animal, but this is more of an all-in, you know, based on what the budgets are, this proposed budget.
Thank you, thank you, ma'am, sure.
So just so we're clear, so you all understand, what happened last year is, we, we did this advertising of this maximum amount that the residents would, that, that's all that they could see, well, then, they would get their tax bill, and the non-adverbal assessment was a hundred dollars more than that max number, well, in that, in that letter advertisement, we never, we didn't tell them, hey, we have this debt service, we're not obligated to in this letter, but we had this hundred dollars in Lake Bank money that was added on top.
Yeah, that was already taken care of, we did the validation, and went through that whole process and noticed them, so they set a maximum cap, that's debt service per unit, so that does not need, as long as we don't exceed that cap, then we don't need to advertise as to the debt service piece, yes.
Alright, let's go on.
Before, well, before we leave this, I just want to make note that the golf course declined.
It did, the, the reason that those change, it depends on where the dollars go in the operating budget, because it's allocated differently, so it could be that there was a piece that the golf course doesn't use every...
Every year it declines, and every year the Pelican Golf Course goes up, I'll just throw that out there, let's continue with it, but be noted with that, be aware of it. Been doing this for four years now, I don't understand it yet, and Russ has sat me down any number of times.
Same across the board, can we move ours around as far as roadways and admin and water? That affects...
It's where, it's where the money goes.
Right, it's where we're spending the money.
Keeps dropping, keeps dropping.
It's because it's moving from, the only thing that implies to them is stormwater management, that's the big piece there benefited, that they benefit, so if costs come out of stormwater management, and go someplace else...
I'm just looking for the year it goes up in, that's all, haven't seen it yet, okay, keep going.
One more, one more thing, Tony, or Steve, right, Stephen Blum? Let's say that the board decided to put a half a million dollars into reserves, do you have a rough guess how much that 193.71 would go up?
Yeah, I can calculate that.
Yeah, we, I mean, we can calculate it, we've got the, Laura's got the files, I've got the files, it's a, luckily, it's kind of a plug and play at this point, so when we get to that point, we can just go into the file and put it in there and give you an updated number.
So these numbers are all based on where you guys left a discussion after the meeting on the first.
Right, no, I understand that, but I'm saying what if?
Yeah, well, we're not there yet, we'll get to, this is the high level, this is where we are right now, and then we'll get into the what ifs.
But you don't have any figure in there right now for a reserve fund?
Uh, there's a little something in there.
Thirty-four, you're talking about 004?
Yeah.
Thirty-four thousand dollars.
But we don't need more than a million, we only need under 300,000, so these, these maps are gonna be way off, but I'm giving it off.
Okay.
So...
When we go to that page, like, if we decide not, like, okay, this is 34,000, that's what they want, but we choose, we think we want to do equals 101.
Jump to the details?
Yeah.
Jump to the details.
Saying, before we leave this, so I kind of have in my mind, you know...
Carol, if we took that Stony Brook to the 100% of what was suggested by the deal, it's an addition about another 200,000 dollars, that equates to about 300 dollars per Stony Brook residence, so that 193.71 would be increased by another 300.
So it'd be almost a 400, 500 dollar increase in there.
Yeah.
Bill. Okay, that's gonna be hard for them to swallow.
Okay.
Just, just saying.
Okay, so we've got a similar slide in here, next slide for Pelican Preserve area, again, kind of giving you the highlight, the top level, where this is, at the bottom, you can see multifamily, the multifamily number would be a thousand, let's say 1,056 to round it, compared to about 962. Both of these, you can see the changes, just a little bit under 10% for both single and multifamily, again, with, with the assumption of what's in the budget right now for them. And again, just to kind of keep, to follow up, this, this number does not include the debt service for Pelican Preserve, they have one bond that is still outstanding in those numbers.
About a hundred dollars, it's right around a hundred dollars if I remember right, a household.
Okay, so I'll ask the same question then, Stephen, if I'm, if I have a single family house in Pelican Preserve, my property tax bill is going to go up 104.49?
That's correct, because your debt service is not gonna change. So that's the...
And because they already put in some money for reserves, I think they added 200,000 at the last P-PAC meeting for reserves, so that's included in here, so this is, this is a figure that we could, I mean, this, this has everything in it.
That's max.
Pelican should be pretty much sacked.
This is the max.
This is the max.
Yep.
Yeah, they've got 200,000 plus another 40,000 for an emergency reserve, so that's all in this number that you're seeing.
And the capital reserve study said that they should fund their capital reserve by 160,000. They did 200, because that's what was done everywhere, so they decided to keep it at the 200, so they're, they're all in where they are.
Okay, so I'm just wanting to make sure that, that I can say that it'd be about a hun, it's, it's a little over 100 bucks.
Is C5 have 168 units?
Well, that's got everything in it, okay, thank you.
Bob, does C5 have 100?
Not sure, I thought, I thought it was a little higher than that.
It was a lot higher than that.
I thought it was like, yeah, I thought it was like 250, but I don't know why I think of that number. Okay, pretty big complex, whatever, huge big.
Okay, so on the next slide is, is kind of, this looks at, in other scenarios, again, for Area 1 and 2, so the, the version you have in front of you in terms of, of capital spending for next year, and this is non, by the way, this is non-bond, bond funds that we're talking about, meaning, you know, the bond will cover the projects that it was already designed to cover, any projects that are not in there, that it would be newer, that totals a 1.3 million, and obviously, there's pages in, in the, the bond file for you to kind of look at what those projects are, but what we wanted to do with this slide is, is to kind of say, okay, if we were to increase the assessments by these percentages to cover either the whole 1.3 million dollars or portions of it, what would be the incremental amount that we're talking about? So if we were to fund 50% of this 1.3, it would mean that a single family would pay an additional, on top of the other slide we talked about, an additional 131, and then you can see multifamily, and then, you know, Stony Brook Inside the Gate, and then 75%, and then obviously 100%, and, and you can kind of really do, you know, when you look at the numbers and the math and everything, you can do multiples of figuring out 25% and, and whatever, but this is just kind of show you kind of to get, get the discussion going as you move through this process and what that looks like. Okay, next slide, kind of, this kind of starts the actual operating budget piece, this is taking a look at your staffing plan, and I usually provide this, this kind of trend chart for you to look at, so you can kind of see based on, you know, the different areas, different departments, where the, the change is occurring, the next slide actually shows multiple years, but this shows you that for, the difference for, between 2023 and 2024 is nine positions, so let me caveat that to make sure, you know, I'm clear on what that means, so when I looked at this, I'm looking at your fiscal year 2023 staffing plan that was budgeted and adopted, and then I'm comparing that obviously to what you have in front of you. There are obviously during the course of, between those two periods of time, there are positions that were already potentially added by the board, or, or different adjustments and different things that would occur, so it doesn't mean that this particular, that there's brand new nine new positions in there, but I, you know, from year over year, I always kind of liked at least from that starting point at it, and it is, you know, nine, depending upon how things are shifted around, because there are positions that are changed, goals and different directives that have changed. So the total wages for those, those, you know, kind of looking at the total 2023 bottom line for wages, and then comparing it to 2024, and this is, by the way, across all funds, is 683,000, and then the other thing that we have already that's in these numbers, we have include for each of the departments, a, a separate line for merit increases, and the total, again, across all funds, is a little bit under 90,000 in terms of merit increases.
And how do we do our merit increases here?
They're, they're, they're based on performance, and they're done during our annual reviews, which we'll do in September for the new rates and the merit increases are effective, the, starting with the first payroll in the new fiscal year.
So this is not a bonus?
It's not a bonus, it's a...
This is a cost of living or...
It's a merit increase, based on performance, yeah, you get an increase in your, your, your wage based on your performance over the last year.
Do them once a year, no matter when they start?
Correct, everybody's gets done in September effective October.
And then the full-time position for Pelican Preserve, is that in that headcount?
Yes.
At 36?
Yep.
Okay.
That's under the public work section.
Okay.
That's one of those.
Okay, so that was just the trend, so now we're, we're kind of gonna go through each of the individual funds here, again, top level, to kind of show you. So the, for the general fund, or, or which would be, you know, Area 1 and 2, the assessments portion, just on the, the top line there, would be an increase of about 440,000. The general fund does include a 279,000 dollar transfer to the capital projects fund, that includes 150 transfer in from the enterprise fund, it does not, again, this is the key one, it does not include any use of either cash reserves, or whatever, you know, fund balance, depending upon what you want to call it, it is strictly a balanced budget right now, which means, you know, your total revenue, which equals your total expenditures and spending, and, and you're not using anything else from the prior year, and then there's a look at kind of a, a five-year, a look at the assessment trend in terms of multifamily and single family.
Steve, you've got general fund version one, gross assessment increase of 440, I'm looking at page eight, and it shows 482, not 440, what's the difference?
Page, you said page eight?
I'm looking at page eight, it's the first page of the 2024... I'm looking at page eight. It's the first page of the 2024 operating budget for general fund 001. If I go to total revenues, which I'm guessing this is, is that the four or are you talking about the special assessment levy only is the 440?
The 440 that I'm referring to is just your assessments, the first row that you see there. The good news is, you know, with where the market is, interest income is going to be contributing more. And that's, you know, the big piece of the difference as well as you can see when you look at page eight. What was the other piece was some soccer additional revenue. But the 440 that I'm referring to in this slide is strictly the gross assessments. Okay, and now the, the next slide looks at this from a, a spending perspective. And you can see in my chart, and this is not all inclusive, but what I try to do is to give you kind of the, the big dollar amount changes. You can see the top row there being a payroll increase all the way down to water management, which was, by the way, a question earlier about where's the water management and how that's affecting assessments. You can see overall the department right now, in this current version, the waterway management went down by about $278,000. Again, that would lead into the question on the assessments. And obviously, per the methodology, each of these departments affect, you know, different portions of the community a little bit differently. Okay, so from there, again, I've shown you a little bit of a trend to just give you some flavor on where the general fund has been. And then now we can move into Pelican Preserve. And, and obviously, stop me if you have any questions. I wanted to just kind of get you through these slides. I know you, you're eager to get into some more of the details. So on Pelican Preserve, it's an increase in terms of the gross assessments of about 352,000. Again, just want to say one more time, there is no change for the Series 2013 bond. From the spending side, it's a net increase of about 232,000 compared to the amended budget. And you can also see there where the increases are. So, you know, we've got some increases in, that are significant as well as, you know, the last one there being the offset of that of about 288,000 coming out of the HOA agreement budget. Also some more trend there for you to look at, just in kind of on where things have been the last couple of years. From here, we move to Stony Brook. Increase of about $68,000. And then the per unit amount increase is about 12% as a result of the changes. Net increase in expenditures, and again, this is compared to the 2023 amended budget, which already had some other changes in it. But you can see from year over year or where the changes are. A big piece is reserves, we just talked about that. Some other decreases that are offsetting that. And then you can see the trend again for, for Stony Brook Fund.
Hey, uh, Chair, are you or Chelsea going to provide an update on the, any recent meetings that you've had with Stony Brook, what the position on that is? When it comes to the reserves?
Yes, I think we're going to down when we get into the reserve. Do you want to do it? Or you want to do it now?
Touch on it now?
Okay.
Yeah.
Sure, and I'll pull the reserve.
So, um, thanks Doug. So we met with, we being Flavia, myself, Laura, met with Margaret, Gary and Chris from the Stony Brook HOA and went line item by line item through their budget. It is their intent with regards to the capital reserve is to only fund the, I believe it's $34,000 for capital reserves, which would be an increase of what they, they did for this current fiscal year. And it is their intent to remove, setting aside monies for roadway, curb and gutters and sidewalks. And that they would request that when the time to do those, that they do a bond. So I will remind you that that is a lot of work to do a bond. The other option could be a short-term bank loan. Or depending on the bank, if they're open to longer term, but we have to go through a whole process. But that is, that's their intent.
And then I just want to talk into, to this comment that it, it kind of came during the conversation. One of the members mentioned that, you know, the, the, the vision or the goal that they have is to go out for a bond and then once that's established, maybe then turn over the stuff. And that was a big eye opener for me.
Maybe then what?
Then turn over to, then take over. They do a bond so they can get the loan for the 20 to 30 years. And then for, for the roads.
Yeah, but I mean, right now, we can only do five years without a validation.
But let's say if they wanted to do the validation and then take over. So I say, okay, let me, let me just summarize what you're saying. Is the goal to go out for a long term, 20 or 30 years? And then try to take over because you're not going to be able to take it over until that's paid off. So if the res, so if they do that route and then the resident says, we want control of those gates, they were not going to be able to do that until that's paid off or until that comes to term. And I don't think they knew that. And I think that's really important when they do have that conversation with their residents and say, look, we can go out for bond, but knows that if we do go for, you know, the validation and everything. During this process, we will not be able to take control of the, you know, the gates and so forth. So is that how it goes, Tony?
Yeah, unless somehow, assuming for sake of discussion, that the bond bakes into it the ability to prepay it. And so that it could be defused and taken out with some private borrowing at the time of all that. But I mean, that just makes it much more complicated. How attractive would that be to a bond buyer? I mean, that's something only an FAA or financial advisor could tell you, like Rhonda.
Yeah. Well, I just wanted to be clear because the message that, you know, the meeting that I attended with Stony Brook, there was no answer even from the residents, because we didn't ask for that. I didn't ask for that. I said, you know, this is for you two guys to think about it, get educated and, and you guys decide what you wanted to do regarding to take over or not. So when, you know, when Margaret actually brought it up, that that's not the route they wanted to take, then I was even more confused. And I said, well, Joe sent an email to staff and the board of directors saying that his goal is September 2024. And he is the president, so he speaks on behalf of the board. And then you were telling me totally opposite. So why, I understand that's your opinion, but you, unless they told that you're going to speak on behalf of your board, I'm going to take what's in writing by your board president. So that's kind of how we stay at that meeting. And I just, I have, how they want to handle the HOA stuff, it's on them. But the last thing I want is for them to pass the information to the residents to, hey, sell this idea on this long, the bond. But then say, oh, we got the bond now, you know, we can, we can take over the gates. And it's 50/50, that's how I feel regarding the residents want to take over and have control.
Yeah, that's a totally separate and distinct item versus residents voting 80%.
No, that's that.
So in order to do this, this is all part and parcel of, they need an 80% approval of their resident. Okay.
Well, I think, I think our position should be, and I know that we had said that we would like this to be, you know, in writing or even, you know, asking for this to be voted on. But I think our position is Stony Brook, what, what I'd want from them is to say that they are not going to use reserves as a funding source. And I think that's what we need to keep into consideration. How they are looking to fund it outside of reserves is really for a future conversation. Now, I know there could be some, some discussion on that, depending on if they want to take the roads over and all that stuff. But I think our position should be to make, make our determination on reserves based on their position of not wanting to use reserves as a funding source and we keep it clean. That's, that's the way I would want to look at this, because we could go down a, a rabbit hole trying to identify what the future funding source is. And, and I'm glad you brought up the, the bond issue because that is a point of consideration. But as of right now, we're just trying to determine whether we want to include reserves or not include reserves. And I would take into account what the HOA's position is. And I don't think they voted on this, right, Flavia?
They did not, as far as I, I'm concerned. And I know Ed had requested, I think, two meetings ago, if, you know, for, if their position is different, if they, to, to have their board send an email to the residents. I don't think that took place because they haven't communicated that to us as well. So from what they gave us, from what Chris presented to, to us and the meeting that we attended, it has increased a little bit more. I mean, I was, I told him, I said, I will tell you what my vote's going to be. And I told him there and there. And, and I said, you know, the rule applies for everybody equally. That's how I feel. Because this is no different than I'll have 10 people from Magnolia Lakes, 10 people from Stony Brook come here and says, we don't agree with the reserve study for 001. We wanted this amount and they set that amount for us and then we're going to take it. Is that the position that we going to take for the other communities when it come to 001? So I just wanted to keep everything the same because it should be this treated the same. Does that make sense?
Yeah, well, the, the thing they got is, is that if we're going to wait to do the roads via a bond financed by us, you just took the transfer of the roads from us to them and threw it to the wind.
That's.
It's impossible.
But, but.
It's impossible.
That's exactly what I wanted to say at the meeting. However, that is one of the board members that is not speaking on the behalf of their board. So that was, I literally said that. I said, I understand that you're saying that that's not going to happen, but we have it in writing from your president saying that that's what they wanted to be looking at. So tomorrow, we actually have a meeting set up with Tony and their attorney and HOA. That's the soonest we, I could get it so we can kind of get some of this conversation started, questions and answers. But, but they're not agreeing themselves on what they want.
That, that's what it sounds like to me. Yeah. The, the, the thing is, is that it seems to me that, guys, let's don't confuse this. Let's get to the real nuts of this. Do you want public roads or do you want private roads? Because if you want private roads, then you're going to have to do transfer. It's that simple. They're going to be public as long as they're ours. And if they're going to be public as long as they're ours, having a guard there becomes a problem. Becomes an immense problem. It's illegal.
Not if you don't.
It's not illegal to have the guard, but the access.
They're denying.
But I think one, one, one other important aspect, we've talked about one component only of what the statute requires for the abandonment by the county of any road rights away that it has. An important section is, one, one of the other conditions is that the homeowners association has entered into and executed such agreements, covenants, warranties and other instruments, has provided or has provided assurance of such funds, reserve funds and funding sources, and has satisfied such other requirements and conditions as may be established or imposed by the county with respect to the ongoing operation, maintenance and repair and the periodic reconstruction or replacement of the roads, drainage, street lighting and sidewalks in the subdivision after the abandonment by the county. So either way, there needs to be funds available for those capital improvements down the road. And that's all. And that's in the statute. And that's part of the whole abandonment and conveyance process.
So again.
And then the other question I had was about the bonds. You said they, they want to potentially sell bonds, but they want us to pick up the expense of doing that? Or is the expense part of the bond issue?
Any, any of the costs associated with bond issue for capital projects in Stony Brook would be levied on all the properties in Stony Brook that benefit.
Just like we did with Pelican.
Well.
The, the recent series bonds.
Here's what, here's what I would say really quick on this. If, if our position and their position is that they want to take over the roads and there's a process they'll have to go through. And in that, at this point in time, they do not want to use reserves as a funding source, then I believe we can, for the next fiscal year, we can operate under the assumption that that process is going to move forward with good faith that they will get the votes and they'll do ever, you know, whatever it takes to, to get that transferred over. If, and we can pull the reserves out, that's fine. If that does not occur, then next year's fiscal budget, then that's where we would go back to what our position would be around the reserve funding if, you know, at that point in time. So what I'm saying is, I'm comfortable pulling the reserves out with the, with the assumption that they're going to move forward with, with taking over the roads. And they will, they will find a funding source in the future. It will not be a bond funded by or supported by us at that time, because they won't be able to, to do both. So we'll give them a year to get that done. And if it doesn't get done, then we'll real, well, I think we'd have to reevaluate next year what our position is.
Doug, I, I, I like that idea. However, there's a, a fly in the ointment here. They just adopted a new covenant. Unbeknownst to me for certainly. And they changed it in 2015 also. That creates, in my opinion, and I want Tony to answer, what is the legality of the transfer of the roads now?
I'm, I'm not sure what they did. They amended and restated their declaration.
They restated it. They put a paragraph in there that the roads don't, would not be accepted to them from a third party. And the only way that we can do a road transfer, what it's boiling down to is in my legal pea brain, is, is that their original covenants were in air from the very beginning because it assumed that we could transfer the roads to them directly. Was right in their covenants. They reworded it 2015 and then they reworded it about what, Warren, 60 days ago? And made it almost impossible for us to transfer the roads back to them.
Well, then they would have to amend their covenants back.
They'd have, that's exactly what we thought.
That's what I thought that you would say.
So we've got to have, we got to have two things happen if we go your route, Doug. We got to have them not only, they being the 80% vote, we got to get whatever the percentage is to vote for another restatement of their bonds or of their covenants, their declaration to allow it to happen.
Well, and I also think it would be pertinent for us, and again, I'm a Stony Brook resident, to, if we agree to pull the reserves, operating good faith, that they are going to proceed with what they need to do, whether it's changing the covenants and get the votes needed. I think we would want that voted on by the board to authorize the, the board to begin the process of, you know, acquiring the votes, changing the covenants to, to get this done within the next year. I think we, we need a, a vote and a position on the board in order for us to continue down this path and, and when it comes to the reserves.
So we want some type of an affidavit from their board stipulating exactly what they're going to do for us to honor this at this point in time. It's basically a deferral.
Yeah, and it, and it doesn't come down, I mean, the board doesn't make that decision, but I think what we need is.
So Doug, so, so I just, I, I am totally agree with that. But that, what you, what you're saying is exactly what Ed said a few meetings ago. If, if your goal is not to do that, then we want it in writing. And a month went by and we got nothing. So now, you know, the time is ticking. Today is the day and we still, I mean, we don't have anybody here even representing it that could even shed some light into this, but we still have nothing from them.
And I think the reason why, and I agreed with Ed, and I think we all agreed that we need a position from, from, uh, from the board. Because the board needs to support that process. They are not the decision makers because they'll have to, they don't have to be voted upon. But we can't move this forward. And then we end up with half of the board not agreeing to it. And then, you know, then we're not in a great position. But it ultimately, in order for the, for the residents to even vote on it, the board has to push it.
Why can't we do this? We take as an act of trying to get everybody educated, not a bluff, but an act to get people educated. We take and put the budget where we believe it should be. As we've already said, that by my crude calculations, that's going to jack it another $300.
It's actually less.
But?
It's less because we have to pull some stuff that is, that 228 includes items that are 001.
It's close enough.
No, it's like 70 bucks. It's a big difference.
Well, what you got, whatever the number is. The, the way I do the number right now is just take 1.8 million divided by eight and that is automatically the number we need to cover the roads without any further discussion. But the issue is, put that in there. And then we have, if, correct me if I'm wrong, Tony, we have till that August meeting to make the change and cut that back to a number that could be a negotiated settlement if they give us the paperwork and the, the affidavit that says they'll do what we have asked them and they have said they want to do.
We can always reduce the amount.
We can reduce.
Per unit assessment.
That would be the way I'd go.
This way, to take, to take what Doug was suggesting, we don't have to defer it a year. We could put it in there right now, subject to change if they come forward with a plan.
And they would all get, they, they would all get noticed of the potential increase in the. And they would all get they would they would all get noticed of the potential increase in the assessment because and one other aspect in just for clarification, the language. The language and the covenants. It it doesn't prohibit the transfer. It just says they're not obligated to me, but it gives them the option. It says. If the CDD desires to convey CDD property to the association. The association and the members are not obligated to accept title to the CDD property.
And what I would like to have happen, um, Chelsea is. If we do agree to that position, so we're gonna, we're gonna put the number in as it would be if we were to adhere to the capital reserves. Uh, study and philosophy. But I'd want to send, when we send this budget out, I would want to send a letter to to Stony Brook. That they could communicate to their residents that the budget that is proposed by the district is um. Is if we were to proceed with a hundred percent funding of capital reserves. However, it is the the district board's intent. To um, reduce that, whether it's to fifty percent or down to zero. If we get the agreement from the board to proceed with X, Y and Z. I I want them because here's what's going to happen. If we don't include that, we're going to get tons of questions, emails saying this is, why is it increasing this much? Blah, blah, blah. We can get in front of that by saying, hey, this is, we're putting this in as a contingency, but our position is to pull that back. If we get the uh. The agreement from the board, we will pull it back and that number would be, you know, greatly decreased.
Doug, Doug, what I would suggest is a different phrasing of that is that when, because at the. I think if we're going to try to get ahead of it via a letter saying that the proposed budget reflects an increase of X dollars per unit. For cap reserve, for roads, et cetera. At the final budget hearing, and you'll be getting notice of this, at the final budget hearing, the board may decide to keep that or reduce it. Depending upon whether or not it ultimately decides to fund the capital reserve. As I I I wouldn't say you can promise you're going to pull it back. That kind of almost negates the formal notice that's required about the increase. So we can work on the wording though.
Tony, read paragraph eight point three of their covenants. You read something else. Read eight point three.
Yeah, I read two point one.
Yes, I'm just reading two point one. Two point one don't scare me. Eight point three scares the hell out of me.
Point one D, eight point three.
Eight point three B and C.
Doug, while while they're doing that, um, and and to the whole board. We sent out that frequently asked questions document that you all had seen a draft of. Um, we sent that out, I believe, yesterday. Um, we did get some some pushback from um, some of the Stony Brook Advisory Committee members that. Um, we were overstepping our bounds by asking them to forward it to their residents. Um, and that they didn't necessarily agree with some of the statements made in the frequently asked questions.
So I take it that they nixed sending it out.
I'm not aware.
Well, Doug would know if he received.
Yeah, Doug, did you receive?
Received it. I haven't.
Have you received it or no? So I guess.
Really easy. We sent it out ourselves. But but eight point three scares me.
Yeah, eight point three is a problem. That needs to be eight point three B. Allows, you know, them to accept conveyance from the district.
Yes.
Eight point three C prohibits conveyance and acceptance from the county.
That scares me.
So that would need to be revised.
That has to be revised. And what I what what ticks me off is that was not in that agreement as originally written.
In the covenants?
It was done in twenty fifteen when a person that lives up there was assessed a chair of this board. To me, that was very, very questionable.
Eight point three C.
Immensely questionable.
Yeah, and I mean, I wasn't aware of.
I wouldn't aware of.
I wasn't aware that they did it, you know, and they didn't tell us and clearly it's a it's it's a nine day change. But Tony, my question to you is, do we have to abide by their documents or we're not? He is a district. That's their documents.
That's correct. We cannot force them to accept something. In other words. The district has an obligation to maintain its assets.
Okay.
So if the district believes that there's a need for capital repair, reconstruction, replacement of an asset such as a road. You know, remilling, repaving, the district has the right to go say, we need to maintain that. Facility in a good, safe operating condition and funded appropriately.
And and everything that they want to do, this is what's got me so confused. Everything that they want to do, they can do if they own the roads. They can go to a bank and borrow the money to do the roads. I've done it. You can do it.
And that's what I said.
So there's no issues. There is nothing that's on this. It's all an awareness. That money is going to go from a non-adollar tax that's been buried and people don't know about to a. Lighten your face.
In order to. In order to get this process moving, we had a proposal that we're going to put in what we think is the appropriate level for the capital reserve. Let's do that and move on because we're not going to resolve the issue today.
And then indicate to them that we can make a change to this if we see back from you in six weeks.
Now we got a path going forward. Here's the path.
So so we're so we're clear. The number that you see here only accounts for thirty two thousand, thirty four thousand dollars in their. Reserve so that when we get to the details after Stephen finishes.
Laura will change it and tell us the.
Yes, exactly.
If we decide fifty percent to that number will boost it. Okay, I'm okay with it.
All right. Stephen, you there?
I think he fell asleep.
No, I'm still here. Sorry, I was on mute. Um, so the the next slide was on the utility fund. Um, it it just so kind of going through that real quickly as well. So about a three point five percent increase. That's built in on the utility billing revenue. The expenses um, are going up a little bit over a million dollars. There is built in there about two hundred and twelve thousand. Um, in principal and interest payments and which includes the state revolving loan for the design one. The reserve program has a little bit under half a million dollars. And your capital program um, has about six million dollars in there um, that you'll see later. Um, in terms of projects.
Stephen, um, Carol had a question earlier. Now that we have that eight percent increase that's coming in on our on the water, the bulk water, how did we account for that in the budget? Did you factor that in?
Um, I believe it is factored in there. Um, I have to take a look at it again. Um. Eight percent. Yeah, I'll have to take a look at that again to make sure that it's all there.
All right, just making sure. Thanks. It'll be obviously revenue and expense. That we're going to pass through.
Well.
Hopefully, if the board wants to, we'll.
For first.
Yes.
Well, they will, so.
We'll have eight percent increase in revenue and expense.
Why in several places do we have, under the amended twenty twenty three budget? Maybe that's the key word. And where we're comparing with version one of twenty twenty four. And I go back to my twenty twenty three adopted budget. Are we? Are we taking into consideration or have we made amendments to this budget? That is why these numbers aren't the same as it's in here.
Stephen, can you explain how the amended budget comes about, please?
Yeah, so so during the year, uh, staff will um, or, you know, staff board, you know, it um, will. Provide us with some amendments uh, to the budget. Um, basically normally it's a line, moving lines up and down and around. And then at year end, uh, the the board will get a full version of every change and um. Uh, do a a full blown of budget amendment to it.
Okay, so what I'm saying though is is that if I'm the regular Joe in the street here at Gateway and I've got the twenty twenty three budget. And I'm looking at the twenty twenty four and I go item, 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 item. By making it the amended twenty twenty three budget, you've introduced something they don't have. In other words, the the differential between the changes have been made, correct?
Correct. Yes, it showcase, yes, show the the financials each month showcase those same changes. Um, so they would be able to see it on on a monthly basis.
I was trying to find the differences between the two and uh, going to take a lot more time than I had to do that.
It's like when we come to you and say, um, like with the vehicles, we didn't have enough money. We need a transfer from the capital fund to that. That's what makes the budget change. Yes.
Yeah.
And then, under the reserves, under the enterprise fund. Uh, I'm looking at page twenty nine, if that means anything.
We're not there yet.
Oh.
We're still on the slide, so we haven't gotten to the budget.
Sorry. Down boy. I got a big, big three letter word. Why? Okay.
Okay, the next slide is the um, debt service funds. And um, you know, basically, as I mentioned earlier, the new. Uh, bonds uh, will not have any impact from an assessment perspective. Uh, for fiscal year twenty twenty four. Um, but you will have, um, I could have mentioned again, really, the Pelican Preserve bond. Has about million six that's outstanding. Um, and then your Lake Bank Restoration Bond, which I've got a next slide for you to kind of show you the increase. So um, in twenty twenty three, this current year, there was actually a slight decrease. In this particular debt service as one of the very early loans paid off. Now moving into twenty twenty four and beyond, there is a um, new. Um, loan that is going to be added. And that's why you're seeing it go from basically a little bit under ninety eight dollars. Up to a little bit under a hundred and twenty eight dollars. And that is just the effect of another loan uh, being added uh, into the mix.
That would be the ones they're working on right now.
The phase two, for lack of a better word.
Right.
Right, so the 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 first payments for those will not be till twenty twenty four and that's why we're obviously assessing for it. Um, so we do have built into this about seven hundred and seventy two thousand now principal and interest. Um, the reserve uh, covers as a requirement as a part of these loans. And then in terms of new work, um, there's about three point six million dollars in a separate fund for that. And then you can see kind of the trend um, starting in in twenty twenty. Uh, where it started a little bit under eighty dollars versus where we are now.
And the more money we spend in twenty five and future years, the more that's going to go up.
That's correct.
The dollar amount you're showing is only what we have obligated and borrowed.
Correct.
Hardly to borrow more. Okay.
Exactly. Yep, that's an important point. Every year, we go through the exercises of downloading every. Loan, confirming all the amounts, all the rates and all the principles and then add in anything new. Or, you know, although there really isn't anything that's going to be uh, paid off for for a little while, but. That is the exercise we go through uh, to make sure we got everything covered, but it is only what's been obligated. Um, you know, as loans, nothing, nothing beyond that. Okay, so the next couple of slides um, show you the capital improvement improvement plan uh, for each of the funds. And there is, as you can see there, a line that shows you um, how much uh, in terms of the bond. Uh, funds are going to be planned on being used. Um, this is a a a six year plan as you can see. So as an example for the general fund, as I mentioned earlier, about one point three. Our our newer projects and then a little bit over six million is what's going to be spent from the the bond funds. For Pelican Preserve, the bond funds are only about four hundred and sixty thousand. And then you can see the rest of their projects, about one point uh, one million dollars. And then moving on to uh, the next page, we we just mentioned really briefly already about the thirty four thousand. Uh, for Stony Brook and then the the big one there for the enterprise fund, a little bit under. A six million dollars and you can obviously see the different categories and there's further details in your in your package.
Okay, so the new administrative building is under administration and in that figure?
Bond, it's under the bond.
Uh, under that that bond figure?
Yes.
That's in that six million something or other?
It's in both Pelican pays portion of it and the and the general fund pays portion.
And enterprise.
And the enterprise.
And enterprise, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, um, next up is your kind of your reserve balances. This is um, uh, just through April, um, we have. You know, new numbers, the the May financials will go out today or tomorrow. Uh, but you can kind of see in here uh, what is on the books. There's probably some changes in the Pelican Preserve. There's usually some. Some adjustments we do there as the year goes on. Um, see Stony Brook, the enterprise fund is just as a a reminder, the um. The line that says infrastructure expansion, uh, two point, a little bit under two point six. That's the category. That we keep separate for the connection fees that come in. Uh, we also have um, under that your maintenance for the enterprise fund. And then I added a row, um, really particular for the general fund. Uh, we've kind of been um, talking about this, where that. Assigned money for the general fund is and we haven't really identified anything officially yet, but. I wanted to kind of show you what that money, what that, you know, pool of money really is. Um, as you kind of have these discussions. So a little bit under a three point seven million dollars that we're talking about for the general fund. Enterprise fund, um, it's got a little bit under two point six. And again, you know, there's obviously a lot of different priorities and liquidity things that go into this, but. Just wanted to kind of have at least one slide that showcases kind of the bigger picture for you.
Stephen, I thought of Pelican's reserve funds were four million something or other.
Um, they might have four million. One thing I don't believe I put on here for them. Because they're a little bit more precise. I didn't put their unassigned money on there.
Okay, this is just the assigned reserves.
For them, that's, yeah, that's, I I didn't, um, they have a a whole different kind of view on this and I didn't want to muddy it up.
Okay, no, fine. I understand.
So Stephen, am I correct in saying the ninety thousand under the Pelican Pond Reserve was basically just money that wasn't spent the prior year?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, that's that rolling, rolling number.
Okay, that's, yeah, a- and and as you know, Sonia adjusts that. Um, here when the last time.
That's, I thought that's what it was. Okay.
Okay, um, and I think that, yeah, now we're just basically recap for you. In terms of everything we talked about, um, kind of looking at it from a. A a total, you know, fun level perspective, staffing and then kind of the assessments. Um. And, you know, basically that kind of. In in a very short timeframe, right? These are your slides.
So with that, we'll go on to the nitty gritty. That's all. I know the bit to do.
That's because we have our pages marked.
You came prepared. I love it.
Hey, Stephen, really quick, I I just have a question. Can you, um? So where we're sitting at right now, it's the budget's at um, around a twelve or thirteen percent increase?
I think that's pretty close, Doug.
Yes.
Steve, can you just tell me, uh, because I I could probably, so I don't have to do the math? In order to get that. Below ten, what would the what would the total dollar amount need to be? I'm just curious.
Okay, um, you know, I should have known you'd ask that question. Let me, let me pull up the file.
Okay, we can keep going, but when you get it, will you just pause and just let us know?
Okay, so can we do that?
Can you go below ten percent?
No, no, no. Can we say to you? Okay, if I have a single family home in Pelican Preserve and it's supposed to go up. Um, a hundred dollars, if I only wanted to go up fifty dollars. Can Stephen tell us how much we have to take off in order to do that?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
You can you come back into the.
That's the mistake we've made for fifteen years. I'd be totally opposed to doing it.
But then you have to, then we would have to determine what line items specifically.
Here's my, here's my point, Carol, for for saying that is, I mean, I think our. Well, at least I'll speak for myself. Um. I try to look at it. Um. With a goal in mind of an increase under ten percent when when we can do it. What I'm not trying to do is to back into that number necessarily, but as we're going through, we know this is a. Um, a high watermark. If there are, if there are are items that. Um, could be pushed or um. Reasonably reduced for valid reasons, I want to have a number. Just to kind of keep in the back of my head. So Ed. Just to piggyback on your statement, um, my my point of asking that question is not to back into a number, but to keep it. In in the back of my mind as we go through, because there are some items that we put in there for further discussion.
So so Doug, just to caveat this, because Chelsea's point is really important. That it it really is going to depend upon which category you'd be pulled out of. But just to give you some some round numbers, um, and again, very round numbers here. If I were to to pull out, um. Let's see, what did I do? Uh, about two hundred thousand dollars out of the admin section. And I did the admin section because that one is 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 um. Pretty much square across everyone, but. Um, by putting in two hundred thousand, that takes the single family down to. Um, and this is all in again, eight point two one and multifamily at about ten point oh seven.
Okay.
On percentages and then Stony Brook would be ten point oh nine. Again, that's about two hundred thousand.
So roughly about two hundred K is.
Yeah, give or take, but again, it really, you know, you know. Yeah, give or take, but again, it really, you know, you know, waterway, you know, we're talking.
No, I get it, I get it. I just, that's all I was looking for is just to, you know, just to target.
Well, um it seems to me that um Pelican has kind of put together. It's it's a budget, and we've reviewed that already at previous things. Stony Brook, you you guys decided that we should probably add everything back in to make it the high watermark. Town Lakes Fund is pretty much the way it was last year. The enterprise fund, we really can't do anything with because that's all numbers generated from what Laura was telling me. So really, the only, if you're going to cut back after this budget, really, the only place you can look to do it in is in the capital projects. Right?
Or reserves or capital projects.
Like the, that that's saying that if you cut anything else, how in the hell did you calculate it in the first place?
Right.
So if if you go on the basis that you did an honest attempt at putting together a budget, an operating budget. The only thing that really is playing is the capital and the reserves. That's it.
Agreed.
And and that's what we've done.
Specifically specifically for for Pelican, Carol, like the the current budget, the document we have in front of us. Has a number for HOA agreement, and that number right now is a hundred and twenty-eight thousand.
Right.
It's not going to be anywhere near that, but we're all said and done. And it also has forty thousand for the emergency, which was. Thinking of future Thomas, you know, something or Ian's.
Yeah.
Where that's not really needed because we're adequately uh reserved. You know, it's a good idea, but if you're looking for lopping off some gross numbers, if you bring those, if you true them up. Instead of being a hundred and sixty-eight thousand, it'll be something under fifty thousand. So there, you're not cutting any of the meat out, and that's just one example where you can reduce it.
Yeah.
And we leave it all in there because we're going for high watermark, and then whatever it is goes back to feedback and then affirm it or, yeah.
But I'm I'm just saying, in general, you've got one, two, three, four, five funds. And basically, um they've all been finessed. And worked through, and we've discussed them at other workshops, so.
But always under that high watermark thought process.
Right.
No, don't let go of that, always under the high watermark process.
And 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 the thing is that if we put this stuff in the higher watermark process and continue to do it. It goes out to the public for their consumption.
Right.
Between now and the date, we have a public hearing, which is what the public hearing is for.
Correct.
So leave it at the high watermark, and then we hear what they have to say.
Yeah, the thing that's going to stick in their minds, though, is the high watermark.
Absolutely. Yeah, that's what's going to get them here.
Yeah.
You go out with a high watermark at twelve.
It's her first one, right? So usually that's what happens. They'll come in and which fine, and then, which I love it because then it's an opportunity for us to explain that. They're here, ask the question, and we'll tell you why.
And and it's our job to do that.
Yeah, yeah, I I love it when they fill up the room. I have no problem with that.
Normally between now and when we actually have the the public hearing to adopt the budget, it's pretty much whittled down to what you. I mean, whatever goal you guys set between now when we set the high watermark and by the time we get to audit August, that's when we really fine tune and. Fine, fine tooth comb through everything.
To me, the key is, is that, and it's been confusing, it's been confusing for twenty years, is this whole issue of capital and reserves. If we can sit there and show them, because the rest of this stuff that we really have here.
Are the bills.
Are the bills. It's the bills. Uh if you're going to start nickel and dime those, you've lost the war. But to have the list of the capital, we can either explain that that stuff's justified or we can't.
Right.
And if we can't, it should be on the chopping block.
Or you delay it a year or two years or whatever.
Just say, yeah, yeah.
They're good at kicking the can down the road. Exactly. That has been a philosophy. You're right.
Yeah, but I mean, necessarily, you don't necessarily have to fund everything at a hundred percent the first year.
Correct.
Sometimes you can make it a two-year project or a three-year project. Um Ponds has done that. They're in what, the eighth year?
Year of the uh.
Yep.
Well, something like that.
Yep.
But it was a steady, almost a steady amount every year, not quite, but generally.
Sure, it'll be a little less than it has been, but that'd be the final one.
So honestly, Ed, I wouldn't necessarily call that kicking the can down the road. I would say you're accurately budgeting for what you're going to spend in that particular year as opposed to other years down the road.
They had the option in year one of the downspout to go out and say, we want two point three million. They chose not to do that. We're going to spend four hundred thousand a year for.
Well, I've been, I've been on the board for six years, and I've been here coming to meetings for fifteen years, and every single year. We have the budget. There is a group that comes in. Things have never been worse. We can't have this increase. I hear that every single year. I don't care if we are in the best. Uh economic condition. I hear people can't afford it. Well, maybe you're living in the wrong place. Maybe you're living in.
Oh, Ed, I wouldn't say that.
Oh, I will. I I I call it like I see.
But I would say that.
I call it like I see. When you live, people, when you.
Please don't infer that any other members of this board would say that.
Well, it's, I guess I've taken it from my brother, Donny, Donny Trump. Tell the people the truth. Tell the people the truth.
Okay.
I have a question.
Make sure that we can defend this stuff or we can't. And right now, the ones that we have said, and I agree, capital and reserves. And put those out there, let, make sure that the people can read it.
Put them where we want, where we think they need to be, and then we can take it down from there.
Yes.
All right, Doug has something to say.
Doug has hand read.
Yeah, hey, just really quick, and I don't know if this is a Steven or a Laura question, uh how are we trending um for potential carryover? Um we normally carry over a couple hundred thousand, I think, annually. Are we in a position where we know what that trend might look like? And I know it would just be a guess at this point.
Good point, Doug.
You budget appropriately, you really shouldn't have that much of the carryover because you're planning your expenses, but.
I'm not talking about for next year.
You say we have things that have to get deferred, it's things that we can't control. Because we do our best to plan for things that we can reasonably expect to complete during that budget year, and sometimes it's weather, sometimes it's supply, sometimes it's staffing. I mean, there's just things we can't get.
Yeah, we all, we all understand that. I'm just, do we have, is there a number today?
We will have it for, we'll have it for Thursday's meeting.
Okay, perfect. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
That's a ballpark estimate of how we're going to finish this year.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're ready.
A big number.
Do you want to go page by page, or do you want to jump to a specific?
I think we'll just go by page by page. We'll just wait for Bob, and then if there's not, we'll flip over. So I'm guessing we can skip all of these because we already.
Yeah, yes.
So I think we start on nine. I mean, on on eight, I guess.
Eight.
Sixty-five, yeah.
Page eight.
Eight.
Again, all these things are what we just said earlier, they're all operating. I, you can sit here and nickel and dime these things. Do you blue in the face? That doesn't mean anything.
Pretty confident that if you cut any of these, we're going to go over budget.
I'm comfortable with it.
I hear that from me.
Okay, so let's just go, yeah, I I on page eight, I don't have anything.
I don't have anything.
This is still operating.
And on page nine.
I don't have the same pages as.
I'm not, I'm not in there either, so.
Oh.
I have anything on that.
It's the next page over.
This one?
Next one. Uh starts with meeting agendas, minutes, and prep.
Yep. Where you at?
Know where you're at.
I have in the PDF document, I don't think.
But it should be in order.
Or, yeah, it should be in the order of the one.
There we go, stay there, okay. All right, so not that page, the following page. So that page, nobody has any feedback. The next page. That's the next page?
That's vehicle operations.
Skip.
Yeah, we're skipping, yeah.
I don't have a.
Maybe you just do like what?
Are you still on the?
Yeah, general fund.
I mean, I opened the PDF document that was attached to the board.
This does look like same thing I got.
Yeah, mine is different, because when Georgia printed my stuff, she only printed the board pack. So I had to take if this from the board pack, package, that's why. I didn't, I wasn't printed a workshop.
By the time she printed the board book, it was already out of date.
I didn't print.
Georgia printed for me was out of date from what we were going to review today.
She gave me a current one, and it's not this one here.
So I don't know, the one that I'm looking at, I picked up yesterday.
What page are you on?
It's not here. All right, Ed and I have the same thing.
We have same page.
Let me see, is this this one?
Page, this is page one of the.
Page one of the.
Just page right here. Yes, so that's the second choice. I, so that I just have a question.
There you go.
There we go.
Now you're good, now you're there.
So the increase of sixty-five thousand for the mulch is because that's what the residents wanted, right? Twice a year, mulch instead of one, yes, okay. Because it's a huge increase, that's the only question I had on that page.
I think.
Uh, yeah, it says change to two times per year.
Right.
Um, we just combined the tree, there was a tree limb.
I saw.
Trimming, so we just combined them.
I saw that. Uh then on the following page, on the the water services. The water quality testing, forty thousand dollars, isn't that the one that we're doing in house?
Same as.
That is the one that we should be doing for uh computer control, so we'll review that number. We're not doing a task, we're we're taking it to.
Yeah, but that's what I mean, we're collecting and doing it. Yes, that's what I'm, so that number.
That number.
It doesn't have to be a zero because God forbid they stop doing it for us every year, but we do, we should put something there, but I think that can be reduced.
Okay.
And then the drone equipment and training, I think we need to add something there, because none of.
We have a drone. It says training.
Yeah, we could just, I mean, training.
I I just, I didn't know if we were going to do like external training, I just figured somebody just taking the drone out.
No, you have to be licensed to fly them, so if we don't have, we have. He's licensed now, so.
He's been licensed.
So what are we looking at as a add item under drone?
Whatever a license cost for an additional person, I I I would, I think that would be a good thing.
How much?
I have no idea. Thousand dollars?
I have no idea.
Is it right?
We'll look it up.
Okay, so. But it's basically training.
Yeah, it's, you go and take a little certification class over by Pagefield.
Yeah.
Yeah, you do, they have an online course in there.
Yeah.
That's not a big ticket item.
No, it's just to add, exactly. And I don't have anything else there.
Airator maintenance. Fifty grand?
We dropped it out.
Oh, dropped out, okay.
Hey, uh, just real quick, are you, uh, Flavi, are you talking about it's the FAA certification license?
Yes, I think.
It's uh, it's under two hundred bucks, at least from what I, from what I was am able to find really quickly.
Thanks, Eddie.
We took out all those aerator uh.
This is going to bond?
Bond, it's in.
Oh, it's in the bond.
Yeah, sorry.
That's why.
So that one, so the contract, so then I have a question regarding the parks and recs contractor.
What page?
Page eleven.
Okay.
Contractual Services Landscaping Soccer Complex. So additional a thousand dollars. But does that mean if we wanted the higher demand is an additional sixty-five?
No, so we we've discussed in about moving away from mainscape, taking up. Maintaining those soccer fields because they're not turf maintenance contractor. We did get a price from JSM, which piggybacks the contract with that the county has, and it's sixty-five thousand dollars. For them to do the high demand maintenance, that doesn't account for its staff time going out there maintaining. For any additional maintenance that would be needed that we're, we don't necessarily know exactly what mainscape does right now, so.
Where's where's that going on here?
That is under contractual services.
Right here.
And so do you, do you reduce, are you pulling the two hundred K out of mainscapes?
That would be our intent, yes.
So that's my question.
That would be.
So you got that sixty-five in this one fourteen?
Yes.
Correct, that's, okay, perfect. Um then soccer complex janitorial services, you still have sixteen grand, but I think you mentioned one of the meetings that you have that done in-house.
We we are looking to take that in-house. We don't have the staffing right now to do that, but that is something we're considering.
So we left high watermark, kept it in there.
How's how's come the insurance is zero?
It's added into the top of one of them.
Yeah, I didn't put the note in all of them. I moved it up into the top. It was allocated really weird. So they had two lines. There was a line for liability insurance and a line for regular insurance, and it was all the same thing, so I combined them.
It's it's on the, like on the previous page.
Okay.
I meant adding the note to each of the insurance lines, because there were so many of them.
So then, so signage, two thousand dollars, I think that's low. Because like just going with the parks and recs and their meetings and the signages are really a mixed match of a lot of stuff. I think this is the time to, if we're going to take care of this area.
What would you like to put in there?
I would have put four thousand at least.
Add two.
Yeah. And then sod replacement at the. No, I'm sorry, the dog park, yeah, so sod replacement at dog park.
Dog installation.
Installation, yeah, sorry. So this is twenty-five thousand, thinking that the dog park is going to remain at this location. Because it's, this is point seven acres, that's one point seven acres. So if it's going to be at the fun park, then that number's too low.
Did you, did you want to change it?
I mean, I I'm just saying if it's for you guys, because.
That goes under cap, uh, nevermind.
That would go under, that that would go under capital.
Okay, that's new.
Do you have to have different sod for dogs?
No.
I mean.
Kind of.
There's grass there now, isn't that?
These are pedigree dogs. I mean, they gotta have the right kind of surface to.
Well, here here's the question.
If they damage a lot and make a lot of holes, or sometimes during the year, just like the soccer fields, it's horrible, you have to do the whole thing.
I think the question is for the, and we maybe we can talk about this in capital, but for the first go around. Do you replace the sod, or do you just use existing for the first year? And then replace this, because you're going to have to replace the sod.
Really good.
In a year, so.
Well, the the underlying question is, do you move the fun, the dog park to the fun park? And then from that standpoint, I agree, we keep, we utilize existing saw that's out there and then go from there.
Do repair and maintenance.
Yes.
Yes, so yes, I think the dog park should be moved.
So it's the same, same as I, I agree with that, and. We're not taking forward, we're going to give direction, right? Okay, majority, we moving it?
Fine.
He's moving it.
Okay.
I'm fine with it.
Yeah, you can't vote.
No.
Not so.
No.
It gives us clear direction on how. Yes, thank you.
So that I don't have it uh anything.
Pretty everything else.
Do we feel like this, then I'll I'll defer this to Doug, just, you know. And honestly, the amount of emails that I did receive from the soccer uh field uh users, I guess the. From under Mark, because I did, he did send an email out, they're really upset of paying more with the quality what we have. So I know it's thirty thousand is really low, and I think we're going to need to borrow this year alone to do what the repairs are now, so why we're not.
Because I'm hoping by having a true turf maintenance contractor that will know how to properly maintain the fields. That we won't have seventy thousand dollar and cost repair.
But what.
One thing we need to consider here is, and actually L tried to do this ten years ago, and it just never went anywhere. Um, we need to have um a a basically a sod farm somewhere, just a place where if there is repairs. Then you just pull it like, like you do at the golf course. Um, you have a place, and I don't think it's very expensive. I think at the time, this is years ago, I think it was like. Ten grand or twelve grand, or I don't know, something like that, that you put in a location where you can pull sod from for for. What do you say, Ed?
The sod farm.
Yeah, just need a.
Go ahead, Doug, sorry.
Yeah, because what happens is when there's a hole or a damaged turf. We have been pouring sand in it, or even if you backfill it with, you know, with dirt. What do kids do when they see a hole? They just continue to dig it, and it gets worse and worse and worse. If we had a sod farm, you plug it, it solves the problem, and it maintains the integrity of the surf, of the of the turf. So I think that's a good idea. Uh Chelsea, if you can maybe talk to the turf provider. Um but I think we should probably put something in there for that.
There's thirty thousand dollars in for sod replacement, but if you guys feel that we should increase that anticipating us having any issues.
Well, it says that quote right right now would be, because we're seventy, right? So I would stick with that, because.
With seventy or thirty?
Seventy.
Okay, I mean.
Because that should get, the seven, yeah, the, the seventy would include a ten grand to get the, you know, have a sod form, and then an additional, you know, thirty thousand dollars for.
Put this, put the, the thirty to forty, thirty by forty to seventy.
Okay.
Then, following page is just a question of the license plate reader, forty-four thousand?
Yes.
That's the Lee County, the latest additions.
This is for the.
And that's just for one of them.
The flux.
No, it's to add everything, plus the, the existing ten.
The other three new locations.
Yeah, okay, they're twenty-five hundred dollars a piece each year for maintenance, they come out if it breaks, and they come and replace it, and they take care of it, they align it, they fix it, it's all the parts of maintenance, but it's twenty-five hundred dollars per camera for that, and we'll have a total of sixteen.
This is that flux?
Yes, yeah.
So then, regarding the swimming pool, I have a question regarding maintenance and repair, sixty-five thousand dollars. So I know we're replacing the doors inside of the stalls inside of the bathrooms, right, but we're not doing the sinks. I don't think we have money to do the sinks, I wish it was all done together, so, because by the time, I don't wanna be, by the time you do the sink, then the stalls are, again. So does this money account for replacing and repairing the two existing sinks, I, the men's bathroom, ladies' bathrooms, and mirror, I mean, all of that, it's in really bad shape.
So do you think sixty-five covers it all?
Well, I'm asking, if it covers, then great, if it not, then whatever.
That's a lot.
I, so Laura just reminded me, we did, we did have fifty thousand dollars in the bond, and I don't know how far.
Okay, so then just leave it.
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine.
So.
Um, well, how mu, how much is the sink?
It's like a big.
It's, it's really the whole thing.
It's, it's one of those trough sinks, right?
No, it's like the, the countertop and the sinks and the backsplash and the whole thing, it's very done.
It's literally being tied up with, with cords in the bottom, and so.
So you're talking couple thousand?
Maybe, that's what I'm.
Carol, we're going for wow.
Yeah. Unless you use it, turn the sink on, you hold it to, you hold the stream, and you turn the sink on like that.
I was thinking white, you know. I'm sorry, I wasn't thinking wild, I was thinking white.
Had to say that based on a prior comment. That's a lot of money.
Yeah.
That's a lot of money.
Okay, and then, the only other thing, the pool, pool chemicals, I mean, that is super high, I thought we did stuff for the pool. Pool chemicals, seventeen thousand dollars.
We have, we have to get. Or need help again, uh, there you go.
So I thought we did a lot of changes with the pool, the new filter, the new, a lot of stuff, that we wouldn't use too much.
So that's chemicals are, that's necessary evil of the pool, that's chlorine and all that stuff, that needs to go in to just maintain the balance of the pool, like the filters, we did to save the cost on the filters each year, which was getting really expensive, but the chemicals.
It's the same thing, no, no change. I just remember.
And the more we use it, the more people use the pool, the more chemical.
Okay, no question.
We, we want people to use the pool.
Yeah. I don't have anything on the thirteen. And, uh, and, for me, okay, are we good with the special events, like, does that?
Well, as of right now, we, we're.
Yeah, I think it's fine.
I think we're, I think we should be okay, we, we tight, but, um, got the Fourth of July one, and then you all requested the fishing one, so of course, we're seeking sponsors first, and if we can't find any sponsors or donations, we'll buy those ones.
Okay.
Fifteen thousand ain't gonna be much in holiday lighting and decorations, that stuff's expensive.
That's probably where we've been coming in the last few years, it's been around fifteen.
And now, are we planning to decorate the roundabouts, because they weren't, so we will have three roundabouts that don't get any decoration, you know, like maybe the, the palm trees would be lightened up, so.
Things that we could do. But, that's.
Uh.
I have, I have. But.
Anything else?
If you wanna add some money to include the.
I remember when we did that in-house, and I remember where they stored those lights on the hot box that Ed goes for his maps, that's what the lights used to be, and it's brutal. And as soon as you put it up, then half the lights don't work.
What we used to do at the, at the beach, Ed, um, Ed or garlands, that you'd like the commercial grade garlands.
Yeah, I know, but I think you should just think about, uh, fif, like Ed's saying, if you're gonna do something with the three roundabouts, because we didn't do that last time.
Does you wanna increase that then?
I don't know, I guess whatever direction the board, the board wants.
It's been around fifteen, so if you wanna add them, you should.
Why don't you go to twenty?
I'd say add ten.
Yeah.
You have no electricity in the roundabout.
Just for my, the link was twenty-five hundred dollars a year.
You're not keep saying that, all right.
All right, and then, then generally, I have two other questions, should we add anywhere for survey, given?
There, um, we did have a.
I saw one for wet, wetlands, but this is not, like.
A what?
Survey.
Survey.
Like if there's a discrepancy, or we need like, you know, an example, Stony Brook or, or Timber Ridge, that we're having issues with.
We've added the professional services a little bit to account for that, so we have, that gets, that's a share.
That should be upfront.
It's on, it's up in the top in the.
Oh, it is, I, because I didn't see a note, so.
Yeah.
That was one thing, okay.
Yeah, that's it.
What you've done, which I like, you've taken basically everything that was à la carte before, and if it's public works, it goes into a broad public eye, that's much better. That's much better. Much, much better, I didn't have anything else on this.
No, I have nothing else.
I have a question on page, uh, fourteen.
Last page?
That's the one we're on, right?
Yes.
Okay, the, uh, in, in the middle of the page there, the, the bold thing, excess of revenue over expenditures, and, um, are you projecting that the budget is going to be about half a million dollars over? Revenue over expenditures? It says budget variance favorable, five hundred fifty-four thousand eight hundred twenty-three dollars.
That's, that's comparing the previous, this line I, which is on.
Oh, yeah, that's comparing twenty-three to twenty-two, or twenty-four to twenty-three.
I think those two are reversed. Are those numbers reversed?
Yeah, that's a Steven question.
Steven. Yeah, I'll, yeah, yeah, that doesn't look right to me, I'll have to take a look at that, but to, to Laura's point, it, it's really comparing the differential between the amended budget and the version one, I think that number should probably be about two hundred and thirty thousand favorable.
Okay, so if it's two hundred and thirty thousand favorable.
It's just, yeah.
I mean, if, in, in essence, if we don't spend all the money that we're budgeting for, you'd have two hundred and thirty thousand, and that would then go into reserves.
Yep.
At the end of the year.
Correct.
If you don't use it. Okay, so should we be looking at this item also as a pseudo reserve account?
You're banking on unspent funds.
Right.
And you really shouldn't bank on.
And I say, we did go through.
A little risky.
Operating expenses, we're trying to be pretty lean, so that does give us a little wiggle room for anything that's not expected in those areas, um, normally, we try not to trim off the operating expenses, but it's, I mean, it's your decision, but that's why we, we, we try to make sure that we're towards right there, and if we trim, it's normally in the capital side.
What's the miscellaneous contingency, I've never seen that, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So, can, can you give us this number for right now? In this year's budget? This excess of revenues over expenditures for the general fund, the O one, can you give us an idea what it is like right now?
Steven, is that in the May financials, I didn't look at them yet, I saw Sonia sent them.
Yeah, I mean, it is, it's just, um.
What is it, what is it now with the changes that we have?
Uh, it didn't change much, they're very small.
Well, here's, here's what he's got, if you go to the front page of this O O one, who is four million five forty-three on total revenue, the one right up above is four million six ninety-three, that is one hundred and fifty thousand dollar difference. That's what that is.
So you're saying the revenues were, were projected higher?
No, I'm saying the, I'm saying the revenue.
With a hundred and fifty thousand difference.
The revenue's a hundred and fifty thousand short. By this, when, when you add all these up, it's four million six ninety-three, when you look at what you've got in the income, you've got four or five forty-three, so you're a hundred and fifty thousand short.
Right, that's why this number is down here, the transfers in, so that would mean we have to transfer money in to cover the operating expenses.
A hundred and fifty, a hundred and fifty, so you're just, you're canceling it out.
Right now, it's your, with the few changes you made, it all, it went up about fifty-five thousand dollars total expenses.
Bingo, so that'd be about two oh five.
Yeah.
Gotcha, gotcha, what, what's the one, did you see that, understand that?
Carol.
Well, what, what, they didn't have enough money in the revenues based upon the projections of these rates charges, so they transferred it from other accounts to make up the difference.
What, what?
But you didn't take it from reserves, you took it from other accounts.
Well.
Somewhere.
I don't know if you call it a reserve, but it was, it's excess cash is what it is.
Well, 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 that's what I'm asking.
We got two choices, we either do that, or we go back and have Steven bump up everything by a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, to, everybody's rate by two, three, five, ten dollars, to make up a hundred and fifty, those are our two choices.
Well.
I mean, eventually, if you get.
I mean, should, should the revenue be jumped?
Exactly what it, it is.
I mean, should the revenue be bumped up?
I mean, if you wanna.
Where did you, let's say, let's ask a better question, where did the one fifty come from that had available money to take to begin with?
Okay.
Where did the one?
Steven, where's the one fifty come from?
The one fifty is coming from the enterprise fund. Yep, it's the right away fees.
How do we transfer that from enterprise over into O O one? How do we do that? That enterprise money, if it's excess in enterprise, it should be allocated to enterprise.
Beats to the enterprise fund.
Understand.
That's what that is. But, uh, I'm not like that.
I will follow up on, on what these right away fees are, so this is new to me.
It just.
The question is, I think what Carol had is, if the cost is the cost, then the cost should be reflected. That's right, is that what you're saying? Yeah, so I, I'm in line with that, like if it's one fifty, then we'll change it to cover that one fifty.
Well, no, what the one fifty does is it offsets.
Well, Steven, if you didn't transfer in the one fifty, and you had to zero fund it out, then the rates would go up.
Correct.
So that's what, that's what she's asking for, and what is that number if, if that occurred?
I, I think it was just for the concept of the district's utilities are located in right, right of way, I think that was the idea.
I.
That's, yes, Tony, that's correct.
I think that was a couple of years ago, the district had a post surcharge, so it was almost like a charge to the utilities for having its lines and pipes in the right of way.
That's correct.
Okay, so.
It's a variable rate, depending on what we need.
On Thursday, can you?
A variable rate, depending on what we need.
So if, if we did not transfer the one fifty in, that's what you guys would like to see? Leave the one fifty in the enterprise fund, and then if it were a true expense to the.
Enterprise, yeah.
It's like a user fee, in essence, for the. I'm actually okay the way you did it, I don't necessarily need that to be trued up.
Okay. Well, I still don't understand it, but I'll, I'll mull it over, that's okay.
If you were doing a true, uh, what do you call it, high watermark deal, to me, the hundred fifty would go out, and you would bump the deals by a hundred and fifty and be done with it.
So, I can give you some numbers here, if you want, if you're curious, um, you take out the one fifty, the, a single family is now a hundred and thirty-one dollars, or, um, or sixteen point three percent, multi-family is now an additional, um, let's see, what is it, a hundred and nineteen dollars, or almost nineteen percent. Uh, Stony Brook Inside Gate would be two hundred and about nineteen dollars, and, um, a fourteen point four percent.
Does that include those other changes that they made, though, I plugged?
It, it does not, I don't have, I can, you want me to put in, you said fifty-five, I can put another fifty-five in.
I, I, I spread it out, I, I actually updated it and took the hundred and fifty thousand out in the purchase that you sent me, so if I look at.
So again, we can, we can crunch that, we can, Thursday, if you.
Yeah.
That's why I think we ought to leave it like it is, you don't wanna jump those numbers up anymore.
No.
Well, no, the thing you can do Thursday is just come back and make a decision that you're going to borrow the money from that other account and take it back out. But at least we know then what the true high watermark is without doctoring it up ahead of time.
Okay.
So in my deal, I would say not only the one fifty, if you, Laura had fifty-five, I'd make a two oh five, and use two oh five as the basis of the new revenue calculation.
We can't charge the enterprise fund that other fifty-five.
No, no.
To the front, oh.
Yeah, just say, dump, dump it over to a.
One hundred and fifty to two hundred and five?
Cooperation.
Yeah.
The fifty, we just added now.
This deal, we just went through.
Gotcha, 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 gotcha.
Yeah.
Okay.
Steven, any of the changes that I made in the sheet in the twenty twenty-four budget, I'm highlighting them in yellow, so right now, there's only like four in the O one.
So that other fifty-five is gonna change the one thirty-one number and the one nineteen number.
Right.
I think it might be higher.
Yep.
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 Yeah.
I don't have any on that. I leave that to Carol and Bob.
To compliment, um, Jen and all of the subcommittees, and I know Bob spent, uh, uh, quite a bit of time, and I know Carol's, um, spent some time with Laura, so this, I am very confident in these numbers, um, that were supplied by everybody, and, um, it's, it's very thorough and thought out budget.
Who's, who's K W, is that true?
That's, that's Castle now, that's the.
It's the new management company.
The, uh.
Instead of having two, we have one now.
Because you guys did observe the excess revenues on the Pelican.
Yep.
So, yeah, so that's what I like, I like to be consistent with everything.
The, uh, I didn't have anything else.
Yeah.
The two items, well, the one item, two, two categories, is insurance, oh my god, from, from a total of six thousand to thirty-two thousand, those new insurance numbers, correct? Liability auto property and, uh, health and life insurance, I mean, that's a, that's a wallop, from a thousand to sixteen thousand, wow. Uh, the only other thing I had is, uh, the hundred and forty thousand for the wetlands, and this will be a P pack decision also, I think that's too high. Thirty thousand to paint the boardwalk, if we are going to move, as we currently have provided, a full-time maintenance person or half-time maintenance person, I think that that's thirty thousand that can be saved, but we'll leave that for them. I, 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 I know, I understand, and the, and then the other two comments, which I made earlier, under the HO agreement, a hundred and twenty-eight, well, that's gonna be considerably less, and the forty for the emergency reserve, it's either, to me, that's in the reserve cap, I don't know that we need to take. Well, this was for, we only have hurricanes once every five years, we covered it the last two times, we covered Irma, and we covered Ian, so I, my, my opinion would be, I don't think they necessarily need the forty thousand, maybe they will.
They decided to leave it.
It's their decision, I agree with that, okay, other than that, that's all I had for, for.
Operations stuff, because that's all allocated.
Now we're on Stony Brook?
So the, just, so Stony Brook, and my understanding is you're going to change these numbers based on the discussion we had much earlier in this meeting.
So can, can we be clear on what the expectation of that capital number is?
What, what I did is, I went back, looked at the, uh, capital reserve, I took the, uh, one point eight million, which was the capital reserve deal, some change, divided that by eight years, which is what we got to get there, that's two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, and divided that by seven hundred and forty-six, that's their equivalent number of users we talked about today.
It's seven seventy-eight.
And it comes out three hundred and one dollars.
It's fifty, seven seventy-eight.
No, it's not seven seventy-eight, it, it's. No, 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 I talked to Russ on this, that's what I thought it was too, the reason it's, the reason, the reason it's not.
Abolish those houses.
It's seven hundred and seventy-eight structures, but several of them are.
Are the villas?
Are condos, and they get rated at roads with different.
The villas, you talking about?
But then, we got a real problem. Last year, the year before, Stony Brook has been prorated, and in this one, Steve's got seven forty-six is the basis. I, that's what I said, I called Russ, and Russ said it's because, and we thought that you had, uh, what do you call it, not single, single.
They're villas, that's what you have, right?
Multi, multi-family. Multifamily. No, we're not counting that.
That, that, that was only, only thing.
Do you all, do you have seven hundred and seventy, single-family homes? Oh, we got a real problem. We got a real problem.
They've been underfunded.
It's, it's. I don't know, Russ, Russ was of the opinion, because everything there is streets, which is the, what do you call it, on the methodology, uh, trip generation. Single-family homes all have the same, but you throw in multifamily, then it changes. But I, I remember what you said, seven seventy-eight, that's the number I always remembered. So I took the twenty twenty-three budget, divided it, number came out seven forty-six. I took the twenty-four budget, divided it, came out seven forty-six. Something's wrong. Well, the good news is, the good news is, it's, it's wrong the ro- the right way, because if we have seven seventy-eight, the amount of money that we're dividing is by seven seventy-eight, not seven forty-six.
Right.
So it'll, it'd be a less of an impact of what we thought. But I thought it was because you had a non-single-family component. Steven?
See, that's the thing, that on, on the Pelican, it does have a breakdown, and in the Stony Brook does not. So on Pelican, it tells me, you know.
I know it, that's why I was telling Chelsea today, I had to work backwards to calculate it, it worked out to be seven forty-six.
I'll follow up with Russ tomorrow.
Cause that changes your numbers.
Because I think in the back, along that main road, it's a bunch of duplexes or.
The villas.
The villas.
But that's an addition to it, that's an addition to the seven seventy-eight.
That's the inside gate.
No, 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 I'm not talking about the other side, I'm talking about in the back, very back of Stony Brook.
By sixty-two, at the end of pond sixty-two, at the end, and if you take pebble all the way to the end, it's the villas.
Yes.
It's seven seventy-eight plus those, you want to know how many of those are? He would know.
He lives there.
There you go.
So that's what we have to look and see.
So what is?
What the.
In this picture. So you've got eighty-four plus seven seventy-eight?
No, 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 that includes seven seventy-eight.
Okay, now we're back. There's where it is. There's where it's at. So you've got seven seventy-eight less eighty-four. You have six ninety-something singles, and then the rest of them are around fifty, because the total comes out seven forty-six.
Sure.
That's how, that's how it calculates. Okay, okay, we're back to the same number. So anyway, I divided, I'm getting back to the same number. I divide the number, the two twenty-three by seven forty-six, and it comes out three oh one. So that would be the, my calculation of, you would add a line item in here that calls road replacement. And put over there, three oh one.
Capital reserve, road replacement?
Yeah, okay.
But that's not a total amount. It wasn't a two twenty-eight.
Yes.
That's what I'm saying, like, we're going way more.
The capital reserve study had two hundred and twenty-eight.
Now, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. No, I took this here, this is why I did it this time. Go to the form, it's in the sheet, and back for Stony Brook. And here's the capital reserve already put out that shows how you got the thirty-four. None of that is the one point eight million that's in the deal, one point eight million is over and above by that number.
Look at this, I'm going by the, the funding plan, so it was two twenty-eight. That, it is, this, this is exactly how it came to us. So two twenty-eight is, is the top, it includes everything.
Okay, we're going to this, well, I'm, I'm looking at it from, from the perspective of, I'm assuming that this is everything but that level. What is?
Because there was another item.
Catch, catch basins.
Catch basins is all, not there.
Well, that's someplace else in here.
Included in that two twenty-eight, so you have to less that out of.
Okay, okay, okay. I took that out, that's in your calculations of the thirty-four. Everything is in the thirty-four is everything but the road, correct?
Curves and gut, let, road, curves and gutters and sidewalks, because that's what the Stony Brook committee said that they wanted.
Okay.
To fund three of them.
So the total of roads, curves and sidewalk in year twenty thirty-one, I believe, is about one point eight four three million?
Yes.
So that's the total amount of in the capital reserve that's not included in the budget right now. That's the only thing.
One point eight.
One point eight.
Correct.
So if I divide it one point eight by eight, which is two twenty-three, two twenty-three divided by seven forty-six is three oh one. That's how, that's how I do it.
So how much you, how much do you want us to put for roadways, curbs, gutters, sidewalks? Single one oh.
In order to, I was just hearing you say we're gonna.
I said two twenty-three.
We're gonna take it from the two fifty-five.
No, what, what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna take the one million and eight, average it over eight years.
Yeah.
And then, you divide, that comes out two twenty-three.
He gets it to the same thing, but, okay, so this two twenty, I thought we're only gonna collect from Stony Brook. Like, we're only gonna look at this two twenty-eight, but this two twenty-eight included items that shouldn't be included, which then I go to the enterprise.
No, go, go.
Okay. So we're pulling out what from here?
Just the eighty-four catch basin, which is line out fourteen, catch basins sections. But that's the line out that would be removed.
And what is that?
Basins are now.
And what is the?
Twenty-eight minus forty-eight.
Two twenty-three is the number I got as the add-on number.
Total for the over.
Sixty-two to.
The total over the life of this, uh, capital reserve for catch basins, which is on here, was up two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. For, for the twenty years that the CIP was from.
That one point eight million is a hundred percent, but, correct?
Yes. Well, hundred percent funding on that basis at the bid or the estimate is correct.
Correct.
Alright, yes, sir.
The question is, the one point, to the extent that, that one point eight million includes roads and catch basins, I mean, and valley gutters and curbing, then would you utilize the trip generation for a portion of it, as opposed to just a straight division by the number of units?
Well, the, when, when he does those calculations, uh, since it's all under the road deal, that same seven forty-six analysis would come back into play again.
That's what I was gonna say, so it may not be a straight division thing.
Yeah, okay.
Can, can I just mention real quickly, I, I keep hearing seven forty-six? Um, and I'm assuming you're, you're taking total revenue, dividing it by a number and getting that? Yeah, it's, it's seven seventy, you have to take the gross number divided by the unit amount. Seven seventy-eight is the number of units.
Whatever the number, whatever the number is, alls I know is when I took the twenty twenty-three and the twenty twenty-four total revenues and divided it by the amount of money you're bringing in, the number was both times seven forty-six point four eight.
Yeah, well, I think my point is you have to take it, not the total revenues, the top, the, the gross revenues, which is the very first line. Cause the discount are, are affecting your number, it's the gross amount that.
Okay, so, so then what, what is the number then?
Seven seventy-eight.
So then we're back to square one again, then the seven seventy-eight assumes they're all single-family then, no allowance for a smaller group.
Well, that's, that part.
What our methodology is, guy.
The transportation piece, yes.
Our, our methodology for transportation doesn't allow that. Multi-families have a five point eight trip generation, single families have a nine point one.
I guess the question for Russ is, is a villa a standalone lot considered a single?
We need an answer to that.
And, and it might be. The multi-family is typically combined or joined together, and these are not, correct? These are.
No, they are.
They are joined again?
Yeah, where? The, the villas, they are joined together.
Okay, and the question is whether, whether two, a two-unit dwelling constitutes multifamily or is not. That's the definition of multifamily requires more than two.
Yeah, I just, you just want to make sure we're dividing by the right number.
We'll get back with Russ on that, we have to get back into his file and see how he set that up.
The other neighborhoods are done this.
You don't have any separates then. You don't have any separations in your rates. They're all the same. I think, I think he just answered the question. Everybody in Stony Brook faces. Must mean that.
Is the same, cause Hillbilly Lakes had it too.
Quite, quite often in the land development codes, two families is not considered multifamily.
Okay, well, then that's, that's all good news then, because that generates seven hundred and seventy-eight instead of seven forty-six that I was thinking we were getting. So you'd have to divide that number that I came up with by seven eighty.
Total number that you want for capital.
The total number is still two twenty-three, that's the key. It's one point eight divided by eight.
About two hundred and twenty-three thousand, so twenty-five, is that what you're saying?
Two twenty-three should be for the line item of roads, which is one point eight divided by eight. Oh, you've got twenty-five reserved? You were, I thought we said we didn't have any road money in there. If you, if you, if that twenty-five goes toward the two twenty-three, then it's gonna be one ninety-eight instead of two twenty-three.
So if that number comes from. That is, uh, just for sidewalks. That's just only the sidewalks portion. Yeah, this, I, this, you know. So we, they, what they did is they removed, there was, um, ten thousand dollars a year for curb and gutter. Uh, fifty-five thousand for roadways and twenty-five thousand for sidewalks, so they removed, they asked us to remove the fifty-five for the roadways and the ten for the curb and gutter, but the twenty-five that's remaining in there is just for sidewalks.
Yeah, if, if the twenty-five is a part of the one point eight.
And there's no money for signs, that's only sidewalks.
Because they just did, no, I think they, they.
They're doing the signs right now, I think, is why.
But they, I think at that meeting, they said they wanted to get ten thousand dollars because it, if, they wanted to do ten signs, I don't know, five signs, in case somebody hits them, remember?
Yeah.
Well, then I'd just take the.
Yeah.
One point eight divided by eight, call it two twenty-three, put two twenty-three in, and have the rest as available for those entities.
So two twenty-three on this line right here that says road, sidewalk, or street side?
And that to say just road and curbs and gutters.
Yep.
Sidewalk will have the ten thousand, or the twenty-five that they had.
So I need to add a line.
Yes.
That's the way I do it.
And we're going on the premise that this document is gonna be a hundred percent, but, look, that changes.
Well, it's, it's, it, it's the high water.
Right, high water. It's a hundred percent at high water, okay.
And if they come back and they offer something to indicate that they're willing to take and take these over.
Oh, other discussion, right now, they'll be treated like every other community.
Drop.
Okay, so, two hundred and twenty-three thousand for roads, plus twenty-five thousand for sidewalks.
Yes, correct. And then see if we can't get them to take and come to the table and get this thing resolved to be done with.
So tomorrow, so tomorrow, we're, we're having a meeting with Tony.
Yes.
Chelsea, myself, and the Stone.
Council.
Their, their attorney, uh, and then their officers, which is Joe, Margaret as a secretary, and then Gary as the treasurer. Um, if you guys.
The guy that we got on this is talking to those people about changing their evidence again.
Well, I'm gonna let Tony handle that. But if you guys have anything that you want it to be addressed one way or another, if you guys. Send that to Tony, I mean, I, 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 I think they did it, I said, tell them the truth, let them decide.
Yeah, that's what I said.
I mean, that's how I stand on that, let, tell the residents, let the residents decide.
Anything else for Stony Brook?
No.
All right, we've got some, we'll make those changes.
I just plugged the number in for now, just so I can get the matter back. Just break it on a separate line.
Yeah, anything on town lakes?
Town lakes, the only thing, the biggest change right here is that we're actually getting billed now from, uh, we asked Mainscape to break it out, so they're actually paying for their landscaping, so that's why that's. And the lake bank is, the lake bank is, like, doing that much.
On the town lakes, the only. Like, so those two little monuments there, that's.
That's the lane.
No, the actual structure itself.
I don't know, I'd have to look.
Cause there's four there. That's the only thing, cause it needs to be repainted.
Well, there's maintenance and repair.
And it needs to be repaired, so it's not here. So if that's ours, that needs to be added to the town lake.
Where does, is it, Tony, you know where that, what's the history on that? Who's, who's this stuff?
Uh, this is interesting, I'm not sure.
I had no idea.
You know what I'm talking about, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Cause there was a, there was also, at one point, there was electrical there, cause they, they had floodlights and those disappear. So I, I don't know.
I'll look, I'll see what. I think that's included in this fifteen hundred on here for maintenance. You know, it says roadways, but that's part of the road, it's the monuments.
Yeah, just because we're gonna paint it and we're gonna, for the first time, do repairs, I think that fifteen hundred is way too low. For four monuments, to, I mean, the amount of cracks, I walked them yesterday.
We just did monuments at ours, we're bidding them, uh, refreshing them because of that stucco crap, refreshing them, and getting the electrical and painting them was eighteen hundred dollars each, and each.
Yeah.
Just did it.
What do you have for irrigation, do you have drips or spray? Think they ought to get away from the sprays if they can.
Because if there was, well, by then, Laura, so then if you can follow up regarding the lighting, if the lighting just needs to be reconnected or repaired, then add it to that ten, so by the fifteen, if we can get that.
So pages.
Enterprise?
Twenty-three through twenty-nine, this is all the enterprise fund, correct?
Yep.
And we we can't touch this.
Go to page twenty-nine, that's about the only page you can touch.
What can I touch on page twenty-nine?
What we talked about before, the reserves of the capital. I didn't understand, that was why I was asking earlier, on page twenty-nine, assuming that we're skipping those other, like, I don't see any reason to, to doubt any of those other pages whatsoever. They are what they are. But twenty-nine, why did we take the reserve maintenance program and drop it from nine hundred thousand to two hundred and thirty thousand? What changed? Was this something in our capital reserves that, is that where it's hidden? That's a huge.
Steven, you wanna explain that?
Sure, that's, very simply, that was all that was left. Based on the amount of revenue and, and the spending and, and the debt service. Um, and you have to have your, the facility expansion has gotta be your connection revenue, that's dollar for dollar. Uh, so that was what was left, um, the goal is always to have more than that, but, um, in this version, two hundred and thirty-four thousand, what was left, that balances the budget.
So we're short, is what you're saying?
Yes, we're short. Now, again, if, if we.
Okay, now I see, okay, that makes more sense.
So there, there needs to be a transfer in, is what you're saying. Well, a hundred and fifty thousand, we just took out of, uh, the general fund.
Yes, that's what I was about to say, that's a great point, and then this is also, that particular row points to your, your need for, uh, a rate study review, as you probably already, you know, kinda looking into, because that's that's the first row that gets affected as, as the cost of everything goes up.
Okay, I agree.
So, so, but the eight dollar increase is in here. In all these pages, somewhere, it's in here.
Steven, is the eight percent pass, well, either way, it would be a pass.
It would, yeah, it wouldn't affect that, cause it. Yeah, I have to go back to the numbers.
Steven, is the eight percent in the revenue, you're gonna check for Thursday, okay, we'll check for Thursday.
I'll check for Thursday, uh, just for clarity, it would go into expenses and revenue, um, and wash.
Right, well, but we just want to make sure the number's included, I under.
So keep in mind too, there are BUCU grants out there right now from post-disaster, and so, uh, we've reached out, I've reached out to Tetra Tech and reached out to uh, the county to see if there's any funding opportunities for the district, specifically for the enterprise fund, that could help offset some of these costs. For instance, the, uh.
Are you talk, are you talking about the resilience meeting, is that what this came?
No, no. There's, there's HMGP grants, there's, there's post-disaster grants that are directly, directly related to, uh, the damages that occurred within that county. And so, um, there's, my point is, we're looking at those opportunities, we're looking at, um, different ways to fund some of these projects. Um, I know that, uh, I think South Florida Water Management District has a grant, um, program for affluent. Um, so we're starting to spread our wings a little bit and, and look for those things.
Go back to page twenty-nine. It's, Steven, you show under bulk potable water purchases, it includes the eight percent increase. But you also show it for bulk wastewater, and there wasn't anything for wastewater.
There should not be an.
So, it looks to be like you have adjusted the boat potable and the wastewater by eight percent, one of those, that the pot, or the bulk wastewater can come out.
Yeah, I'll take, I'll.
We need to check those.
Yes, I'll check those.
Yeah, we gotta get, what's the name of the firm that does, uh? Get the name on Tiptoe.
Raff.
Raff, Raff, so we need to get them in.
No.
And see what impact this has.
They've made it, you'll see on Thursday, we have the draft, we have the draft, uh. They've made it, you'll see on Thursday, we have the draft, we have the draft, uh, capital reserve study from them. Um, and then we have another item specific, specifically related to the eight percent increase that the county is proposing.
That's this one. It's in the board book.
That, and then, yes. And then there's a separate item for your review about the eight percent so we can get clear direction on how you wish for us to proceed.
Okay.
And what ramifications are, if, if you don't choose that as a pass through.
And that's on Thursday.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I think we're for good. Even right along.
Yeah, at the end.
We're up to page thirty.
I don't have any.
I don't have.
I don't have any, anything. They're just. I'm done with everything. I don't have anything on anything.
So I'm gonna just recap. Go back and find all my changes and then fucking make sure I got everything. All right, um. You wanna take this?
All these capital budgets out and in a form that you can now read them.
We're going back to. Which I think was like page. Makes it hard. All right, uh, starting in the first changes under waterway management. We added in two, two hundred dollars for drone equipment and training. And then, um, changed the signage under. Oh, sorry. This is all on page nine? Page nine. So we added two hundred dollars at the bottom of page nine, ten, sorry, page ten. Budget page ten, two hundred dollars towards the bottom for drone equipment and training. And then on the next page under Parks and Rec. Or signage, I increased it from two thousand to four thousand. And the sod replacement, we moved that from twenty-five thousand.
Seven.
To seventy. Then down under special events, we updated the holiday lighting from fifteen to twenty-five thousand. And then we took out the transfer in of a hundred and fifty thousand under other financing from the enterprise fund. Yes. And then Pelican, we didn't change anything. Uh, Stony Brook, I think that's the only change we made there. Uh, I did. Is the twenty-five thousand is now two hundred and fifty-eight thousand, but that will be broken out into three separate lines, one for roads, one for sidewalks and one for street signs. So that'll just, but it's a total of, instead of twenty-five, it's two hundred and fifty-eight thousand. And that was it for Stony Brook. And then, uh, Town Lakes. Moved the roadway maintenance and repairs from fifteen hundred to ten thousand. And then the enterprise fund. I took the hundred and fifty thousand on at the bottom and Steven is gonna double check the eight percent for the bulk. That was it. And Steven, I do have those all highlighted in yellow, so I'll send this to you.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions for the budget workshop?
I have one question. Uh, we'd make a to the motion, whatever that we could pay for this meeting, not to exceed our twenty, whatever.
Going to do that, you need to make it on Thursday.
Yep.
Okay, then I'll do it Thursday.
You guys are gonna get paid after like October at this rate?
I don't know how, but last year I didn't get the full tilt. I didn't miss any meeting. Maybe it's just me for not checking.
You didn't cap off, you.
Oh, I was six hundred short.
Well, we canceled one in September. That would have been two. I can go both.
Anyway, I'm just gonna make sure I don't come up short this year. Pay it early.
I mean, he shouldn't be short because even, even if he missed it in September, because I think like in October or November, we already were fully, because I remember sending an email like, hey, I didn't get paid. She's like, yeah, you did, because you backed out.
We didn't have anything in.
That's why you guys decided that you were only gonna get paid for regular meetings and other work. Right.
All right. So do you want a direction? I know we kind of talked about the frequently asked questions and what Doug mentioned and what Ed mentioned about, you know, us sending out the information. So are we going, we asked the Stony Brook. We said, because what we said at that meeting that I attended was, I will send it to your board and then your board can send it out to you guys. If you don't get it, then talk to your board. So we're only gonna post on the website, I believe, right? But do we want to mail that out to them if their board is not gonna send? I mean, it took a long time.
We have to fill it out to everybody.
Yeah.
Nothing negative about.
I mean, it's, it's a fact, you know? It just lets them understand what they're saying.
Here's what I, I think should, we should jump on topic, the agenda of that topic. So the, I think let's have our conversation tomorrow and bring it back up on Thursday and, and see if they're willing to distribute that. And if they are not willing to distribute it, then we can just do a mass mail.
Yeah, I prefer that they take the, you know, like work together and do it because that's, they said they would. And, and if they don't agree with something, then they can address that at a meeting here or there, doesn't matter.
Don't want to have somebody come back six months from now saying, I didn't even know it was under discussion.
And that's why I, I, I say I'm, I'm going, we're gonna take the time. Tony took the time. I took the time. I mean, we all reviewed, staff took the time to look at a few things.
Nothing should be hidden in the rip.
And, and that I want to give them all the information and let them make decision, but give them the information if we have it. I don't want to.
Well, I was immensely disappointed. They have the right, every right in the world to amend and restate their covenants. But when it comes down to making changes on parts that are critical to our operation, that's in their covenants and not telling us about it, uh, I'm, I'm not happy about that at all. That, that's just not right. As like somebody tried to pull the wool over my eyes.
All right.
Take motion, we adjourn.
Perfect.
All right.
Second.
I mean. You missed six hundred dollars last year.